There you go. Oh.
He just went that way, didn't he?
Oh, the, where's the?
That's why I used to hate Corvallis.
It's not here. There it is.
Preston Valley and Corvallis High School.
Bring mine, I'm gonna. Yeah, choose now.
Welcome to the Salem Kaiser School Board meeting. We're going to reconvene. And will you please join me in the pledge allegiance?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for As we pledged our allegiance to the flag, I couldn't help thinking about the fact that this is quite a day, that this is 9/17, and 17 years ago was the worst experience the United States has ever gone through. And I thought maybe you would like to spend a minute or two, and in respect of those people that lost their lives for our country. All right, our next item is Board in attendance, and we are all present today. There are no agenda modifications. There are just a couple things I want you to notice before we go on. And one is the fact that there is a different paper out in front that apprises you of some of the new rules. And those are for speaking. And when we come to the agenda of speaking for items on the agenda, we'll put up our new super friendly box here if you didn't happen to see it. I know it's hard, a little bit hard to read, but it will count down the time to your three minutes. And then it has like 10 bongs, makes 10 noises. And then that means your time's up and then it probably gets rude after that if you don't sit down. But I thought I'd give you an explanation of why we've gone through this so much. We've changed every meeting that we've had since July 1st. And it's kind of a problem in that I always wanted to greet people in a friendly manner, make sure you know that you're welcome to talk and what have you. Well, we've changed that. We're still wanting to greet you and we will, and be friendly. But we had to do something to kind of get it going. And so Alice, our Board Secretary, picked out this wonderful machine for us, and we'll see what happens. Don't be offended.
Right under the bus.
The last item on, or the next item is the spotlight by our Superintendent Perry.
Good evening. Our first spotlight will be presented by Lillian Govis, our Director of Community Relations
We are so excited to celebrate our Business Partner of the Month for September 18. It's my real joy to bring to the front Columbia Bank, nominated by Principal Rhonda Rhodes at the Career Technical Education Center. So representing Columbia Bank tonight is Senior Vice President and Regional Manager Ken Junt. Columbia Bank currently serves businesses and individuals at more than 140 locations across Oregon, Washington, and Idaho. Columbia Bank has recently partnered with C-Tech, and we would like to thank them for their generous donation of $125,000 to support construction efforts. It is because of the support of Columbia Bank and many others that we are able to create new programs to serve the best interests of our students, their aspirations, and their education. The donations, like Columbia Bank's, will be used to build C-Tech's new law enforcement program and business development and leadership program. Columbia Bank's local leadership has also partnered with the business team to deliver financial literacy curriculum to C-Tech students. C-Tech is a public-private partnership between Salem Kaiser Public Schools and the Mountain West Career Technical Institute. More than 600 students are studying in eight different career fields at C-Tech, learning skills that will help them continue their education or find good-paying jobs after graduation. And I will say, I got to be there the day that the governor learned how to fly a drone at C-Tech, and I think she forgot that she was the governor that day because she was pretty excited. Students at C-Tech have a 98% graduation rate and certainly are the shining star of a successful model in Salem Kaiser Public Schools. So thank you again for supporting Salem Kaiser Public Schools. We look forward to growing our partnership with Columbia Bank. The ribbon cutting this week was awesome. I was joking that Columbia Bank is going to have a branch there soon at C-Tech. And we look forward to continuing to explore the ways we can best support our students together.
Our next spotlight will be presented by Lisa Harnish, a Board Member for Salem Kaiser Education Foundation.
All right. So good evening. Unfortunately, our special guest is not here today. However, I'd love to invite Bridget West, who is the Principal at Hoover Elementary, and Linda Mongia, who is also with Hoover. And so I want to go ahead and read this into the record so that we can have this and then document this for Susanna. Our Volunteer of the Month for September is Susanna Perez, who is the Community Gardening Liaison at Hoover Elementary School. Back in 2008, Hoover Elementary and St. Timothy's Church embarked on a journey to help aid the fight against hunger. Hoover staff, St. Timothy's parishioners, and Marion Polk Food Share built 12 raised garden beds from scratch. Three years later, Hoover added more raised garden beds and currently has 33 raised garden beds. The parishioners at St. Timothy's are so involved and provided two volunteer community garden liaisons. They did a fantastic job. But lives change, people move, and we needed a new liaison. We're no, we were in long, excuse me, we were in jeopardy of not having anyone volunteer in this role and at risk of no longer having a community garden. Then a woman with a quiet voice said she was passionate about gardening, passionate about Hoover Elementary, and passionate about the community. The soft voice was of a Hoover parent, and she volunteered to take the liaison role at Fuente de Fida Community Garden. This amazing woman has brought back life into our community garden. Had it not been for Susanna, the 33 raised garden beds would grow no more. Susanna is committed to the fight against hunger and to gardening, that she took the Master Gardener class with Oregon State University Extension Services and has taught gardening classes to help families take full advantage of what can be grown in a raised garden bed. When Susanna's last child went to middle school, we were sure that we were going to lose Susanna in her volunteer role. Fortunately for the Hoover community, Susanna has continued in the volunteer role and continues to make a difference every day. Because of the numerous volunteer hours and her devotion to our school, our families, and the community at large, Hoover would like to recognize Susanna as Salem Kaiser's Volunteer of the Month.
All right, our last spotlight is presented by Larry Ramirez, our Director of High Schools.
Good evening. If I can call Sprague Senior Eden McCall and Principal Craig Swanson to the front. Sprague High School Senior Eden McCall recently won first place in the Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services Student Video Contest. This annual contest is organized by the Oregon Young Employees Safety Coalition. The group aims to provide education and training for employers, young workers, educators, and parents. It does so by highlighting safety and health risks that young people joining the workforce need to know about. Eden's video, called "The Silent Condition," emphasizes the importance of speaking up if you see a safety-related problem at work. Eden won $500 in prize money and earned $500 for Sprague High School. Winning the video contest helped Eden land an internship this past summer with a safe corporation. During her internship, Eden and her colleague Jill Coate produced two new public service announcements called "Life on Mute" that educate young people on the causes of preventable hearing loss. The commercials are of professional quality. All three videos will be shared on the district website tomorrow under the Spotlight on Success story about Eden. Congratulations, Eden, and we look forward to more videos. Great job.
The next session in our meeting is for public comment, and this is for agenda items only. And I have several signed up. If you missed that outside the door, you can go sign up at this point. Since we have several tonight, let's call two at once. And the second person I call will be the person to follow, the one that's going to start. Shalisaan Krier. And following her would be Kudzai.
Okay. So we just start now?
Yeah.
So, good evening. My name is Shalisaan Krier. And I come to you guys tonight as a former public school teacher, an education law researcher, and policy advisor, a parent of Salem Kaiser students, and just a community member here in Salem. And I want to talk tonight about the resolution affirming safe schools. That resolution has been particularly important to minority and immigrant students after increased harassment of students in 2016 and 2017. In addition, it's also been an important commitment, and important that our students and families know that we have this commitment from our school board following national immigration policies, which really have made it very difficult for a number of students. And so I see this measure as something that serves to reaffirm our commitment to their health, safety, and educational success. I've spoken with a number of students, particularly some of the DACA students, who have shared really some of the stress that they've been facing in present years. And right now, with Measure 105, that's a thing that also has a strong effect on safe and welcoming schools for these students. So I know you're going to reaffirm the measure, but I will also ask each of you to consider either individually as leaders in our community, you know, or collectively as a board, to send a strong statement to our students and our families against this measure, that we as a Salem Kaiser School Board and Salem Kaiser Schools, you know, are there to protect them. We want students to be able to go to school and feel safe. We want students to be able to go to school and not have to concern themselves with the stress of whether parents or family members or loved ones, you know, will be there when they get out of school. Absenteeism, I've studied research, I'm on, I serve on state advisory committees, and one of the things that we start with when we talk about school success is kids being present in school. You know, we saw in 2016 and 2017, you know, a sharp increase in absenteeism from the immigrant population of students, and we don't want to see that again. So again, I just really, I applaud the leadership that you guys have shown thus far and just ask that you continue to show that as a board and individually. Thank you.
Thank you. Kudzai, and following Kudzai will be Yamara Tarula.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Kudzai, and I speak as a student from South Salem High School. So I am a first-generation American. My parents are from Zimbabwe. And so this topic really hits home for me. For people who are in the position where they don't feel comfortable, they don't feel accepted in a community or a school or in a setting like this, it's somewhere where they don't want to attend. And just as the previous speaker just stated, the resolution is going to be reaffirmed, which is powerful. But it's one thing to do something on paper, and it's one thing to actually do an action. And I feel like it's extremely important that from this higher level, there's a message, a clear message sent down to all the students in all schools that the state board does care about you. We do know what's going on in this nation. We do know the connotations of undocumented citizens or other matters in this same category. So it's just really important that everybody feels accepted, everybody feels included, because it does affect some people's educational success. When you tell somebody, or when somebody feels like they are not included in a group or somewhere, they won't want to participate, and it creates a barrier in the way that they want to pursue their education. So I just plead for a form of acknowledgement for the demographic, the people that would be affected by the reaffirming of this measure. And I just, I just want you to know that people really do care about what all of you do think, and your thoughts and actions and words have a really big effect on the students and families of the Salem Kaiser School District.
Thank you, Kudzai. Yamara?
Yomira.
Oh, thank you. And Jan Montes?
Montes.
You follow Kudzai. Thank you.
Okay. I just ask if you guys can understand if I go over a few seconds. My voice is a little cracking because I'm sick. Greetings. My name is Yomira Tarula, and I will be a fourth-year student at the University of Oregon, majoring in ethnic studies. I am proud to say that I am a current intern for the leading organization in the state of Oregon when it comes to immigrant advocacy, coalition building, and civic engagement within the Latinx community, Gausa. Because as a daughter of immigrant parents, I have been taught from a young age to ayudar mi comunidad y los más afortunados, to help my community and help those less fortunate. This has resonated with me still to this day, as I've seen my community, Latinx immigrants, become the targets of anti-immigrant movements in the state of Oregon and across the nation. That is why I am here today, despite the fact that I'm sick, to be a voice to human beings like myself that will be affected by this anti-immigrant hateful measure. I refuse to live in a state where our people, our Black and Brown kids, will have more anxiety since before and after Election Day. Early, as my second year in college, I had the best opportunity to be a coordinator for an after-school program for Latinx middle school students called GANAS. I became close to those angels. I shared smiles, laughs, and also anxiety. My students would share with me how their classmates would tell them to go back to their country, or how I had a student be threatened by a classmate who told them that they would tell their father, who was a cop, to deport their family. As parents, as representatives of our education system, I hope you will not want the same to live in a place that will open the door to racial profiling and families being torn apart simply because someone is perceived to be an undocumented immigrant. Who will be targeted? It will not be immigrants like Melania Trump's parents, who just became naturalized citizens. It will be human beings that have the same complexion as mine. I find it ironic that this country claims to be a nation of immigrants, yet purposely forgets that the European settlers obtained this land by committing genocide toward Native Americans, built this country on a system of labor that denied human liberty, dignity to African lives that were forcibly brought to the stolen land. Our folks say, our native folks say it loud, that no one is illegal on stolen land. I bring this up because it has, because it has to be obvious what OFER, the group behind Measure 105, whom also has been considered a hate group by the Southern Poverty Law Centers, trying to do, place fear in our community as mechanisms of control and make our local police do the job of the federal law enforcement when they need to be making sure they are keeping our families safe. It is absolutely cruel and inhumane. I can assure you, I am no criminal. I am a product of this country. I contribute everything I have, my brain, my heart, my energy, to be the hardest worker, the best student, preparing herself to be a teacher, and hopefully, one day be in immigration to help protect those life of the most vulnerable, who I promise you only want to live a better life. Again, this measure will only continue to place fear and hate in our communities. So I urge you to please take a stance and say no on Measure 105. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Next will be Paul. Whoops.
Yeah, she's next, and then Paul's up.
I'm sorry, I went off here.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that heartfelt, heartfelt comments. My name is Jan Montes, and I have not spoken to the school board before, and I'm very grateful and honored to do so. I have several things I'd like to talk about concerning Measure 105 and why I believe and know so strongly that we must vote no on Measure 105. I grew up here in the valley. I grew up here in the 60s and 70s, and part of the 80s, and I ended up living around the world. I ended up being a teacher in Mexico. I ended up having six students here in the Salem Kaiser School District of a biracial family. During the 60s and 70s, I used to, a bus would come to our neighborhood and pick us up to go pick crops, strawberries and beans primarily. And that's when my love began for the people who Measure 105, if we vote yes on it, we must vote no, will affect the most. I remember, I remember when they used to put roadblocks up around our cities. I remember very clearly, and I remember people who I knew being stopped at these roadblocks simply because their skin was not white. I remember that feeling of knowing the people who I loved having to go through that. I do not want that to happen again, ever again, in this state, in our Willamette Valley. Last week, I had opportunity to meet with a man who was 72-years-old, who was a bracero. And if you don't know what a bracero is, I'm assuming you do. They came here and they worked harder and stronger, picking our crops, doing the hard labor, living in terrible situations. And now, we sent them back to Mexico. We sent them back to the countries they came from. Like their, like their work didn't matter. I am sick and tired of these people who I love deeply and advocate for and work side by side with, to be treated in this manner. And so I would ask you, please, to support no on Measure 105. Thank you very much.
Paul Chrissell.
My name is Paul Chrissell, and I'm a resident of Salem, and I provided written copies of my comments that will be passed out to you afterwards. But I want to summarize what I wrote. I provided you a copy about Measure 105 because I think it's relevant to the safe and welcoming schools resolution. I want to talk about what values underlie the safe and welcoming schools. When you passed this resolution, it was predicated on a value that students and parents should feel safe and welcome in the schools. That was a value that you believed in, that you passed, and you tried to say to parents. Now, but what was the context? The context was at the time of its passage, students and parents were reeling from the hateful rhetoric, the fear-mongering, and the scapegoating that was going on as a result of the 2016 election and the immediate thereafter. You passed the resolution with that in mind, with those values in mind. So what would Measure 105 do to undermine safe and welcoming schools? It throws out a 31-year-old law that has served us well. And that law only prohibits the use of our public tax dollars for local law enforcement to go after people, only regarding their immigration status. However, the law clearly states that nothing prohibit, and that law prohibits the police from going after criminals. Nothing prohibits going after criminals. So how things were before 1987, you've heard a little bit about that, but people were ripped out of their homes. There were horrific examples of people, regardless of their immigration status, being pulled in, pulled off the street, ripped out of their homes. And many of them were legal residents and citizens, but detained for days, weeks, without knowing what was going to happen to them. There was such an outcry over that, that the legislature in 1987 passed the current law. And it was passed overwhelmingly. There was one no vote in each chamber. That's virtually unanimous. You don't hear that anymore. It's bipartisan. Everybody said, this is terrible behavior. We're going to send a message, our tax dollars aren't going to be used to enforce federal immigration law. And it's served us well for 30 years. So the impact of Measure 105, if the current law is repealed, you would lose the foundation on which you passed your resolution. The current law is what allowed you to say to the students that local, you don't have to fear local law, you don't have to fear the security, the school resource officers, you don't have to fear the school personnel is going to cooperate with federal immigration. If 105 passes, the impact is you can no longer give those assurances. So what does leadership mean? I attended your last work session where you talked about board's role, and I think it's a narrow view of leadership. You are elected leaders. You are elected school board. We depend on you to become knowledgeable about education issues so you can inform us about the impact of things that happen. I heard many of you say the school board shouldn't take position on ballot measures, but a ballot measure is simply legislation. As it is through the Oregon School Boards Association, or as the individual school boards, when there are issues before the legislator that impact schools, you speak to those issues, you testify to those issues. Well, I'm calling you to action now as leadership. Stand up, tell us, tell the public what the impact does in schools. Oppose Measure 105, and please read the full context of my statements. Thank you.
Maria Torres. And following Maria will be Patrick Pollard.
It will be Patrice.
Patrice, I apologize again. Is Maria present? Okay.
Good evening, Superintendent Perry, school board members. I wish to speak of safety in our schools and ballot Measure 105. Ballot Measure 105 is an anti-immigrant measure sponsored by OFER. A hate group is determined by the Southern Poverty Law Center. This measure is immoral and will cause our schools to be less safe because of racial profiling. Anyone who is perceived to be an immigrant, based on the color of their skin and their accents, will be more likely to be a target for harassment. Everyone has the right to feel safe in their communities, no matter where they were born. Parents, grandparents, and caregivers should be able to take their children to school without the fear of racial profiling. When families do not feel safe, they are less likely to participate in community events, less likely to report crimes. Parents are less likely to come to conferences and school-sponsored activities. Our students cannot learn well in an environment of stress and fear. Immigrants are our friends, our neighbors, the people we work with, our healthcare workers, the people who teach our children, the people we know. the people who teach our children, the people we know and love. My husband is an immigrant and naturalized citizen, and we have three grandchildren in the Salem Kaiser School District. Our children are our future. That is why we must speak up together, loud and strong, where there is an injustice. We are all connected in this life. When our young people cannot achieve their fullest potential, all of us, individually, as a community, as a state, will suffer the loss. This ballot measure is unjust and immoral, is intended to spread fear and bigotry. Fear and hatred are germs that spread. We may not be able to stop prejudicial thoughts people have, but we must not legitimize their actions. Please endorse a no vote on ballot Measure 105. Please keep our children and families safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrice. Following Patrice will have Michael Pollard. And then Rita Glass will be next.
Good evening Superintendent Christie Perry and members of the board. I had a lot prepared here, but much of what I had to say have been stated so well by those that preceded me. So I endorse all that they said. So what I will do is be who I am, a mathematician, and I'd like to point out a few things. You do have a policy should in case the federal law enforcement officers, ICE, would ever show up at our school district and in the schools. And I really applaud that. That gives me a sense that you do understand what's been going on. What complicates that law should ballot Measure 105 pass is that now you will have local law enforcement officers working for ICE. What would you do? So when you do talk among yourselves, please consider that. It's a catch-22 situation. And then I noticed some buttons. Everyday 24, everyday 24J, wonderful. And I will start, I started to think, the Salem Reporter, which is a new online news service that we have, came out there first, and it talked about that, and it also talked about the chronic absenteeism that we have. I love statistics, and I read through it. Like Maquis High School, last year, forty, almost fifty percent. Oh, and that was North Salem High School. Maquis was almost, came within a few points. West Salem High School was thirty-two percent. And I looked at the high schools, and then I went and did a little bit more research, and I realized there are lots of factors that goes into chronic absenteeism. Lots. Very complex. We know poverty is one, you know, just a whole lot. And I know that twenty-four, everyday 24J will be looking into that. But then there's another statistic that just pointed, just stuck out there for me. North Salem High School, Maquis High School have a high percentage of Hispanic students, over fifty, sixty percent. West Salem High School, less than twenty percent. Could there be a correlation? Think about that, look into that, please. And then I'd like to thank you very much for affirming the equity lens, that you will hold the students safe and provide them a well-adjusted learning environment. And let's keep ICE out of. Officers are in our school to protect our students, not to hunt them down.
Thank you, Mike. Rita Glass next, and after Rita will be Mindy Merritt.
Good evening Chairperson Goss, Vice Chair Blasi, Superintendent Perry, and the school board members. I also am speaking on item number six, the resolution for Safe and Welcoming Schools. I applaud you for reaffirming that commitment to our students and families. However, I am asking, as an elected body, that you take a public stance and an opposition on Measure 105 and build that protective wall for our students. That will put meat and teeth to this resolution. As we know, the word "wall" has different connotations since the election, but you have the chance in opposing one, Measure 105, and build a protective wall for our families and students. And I also ask that we, that the district goes back and makes sure that not only office staff, that all staff are aware of the policies and the statements that if I should come into their building or come around the back on the playground or whatever, the, the situation may be, that these students and families are protected and all staff know what the district's stance is in responding to that. But again, I ask, we can't have a safe and welcoming school and allow Measure 105 to pass. So as elected officials, please use that to better the community. Otherwise, we will have, our attendance initiative will not be successful if Measure 105 passes. So as a woman of color from an immigrant family, I thank you for that, and I look forward to seeing your, your public stance on an opposition to Measure 105. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Next will be Mindy Merritt, and following Mindy will be Zoe Diakon.
Board Chair Goss, Vice Chair Blasi, Board Directors and Superintendent Perry. My name is Mindy Merritt, and I reside in Salem. Tonight, I am here to speak on two agenda topics. First, I would like to commend this board for reaffirming the board's commitment for our district to have safe and welcoming schools. As the first three of five of MAS Law's hierarchy of needs identified, we must first have our psychological needs met, then our safety needs, needs met, then we must know how we belong and that we belong. A safe learning environment is the foundation to a student being able to learn. SKEA recognizes the importance of students feeling safe at school, but also within our state. As the president, I would like to share with you a recent motion that our SKEA board passed. The SKEA board opposes Measure 105 and supports Oregonians United Against Profiling. In their efforts to inform Oregonians about the detrimental issues that would occur if this measure were to pass, I encourage you to also log in on to Oregonians United Against Profiling to find the facts about opposition of Measure 105 and to understand how detrimental it would be for our state to lose sanctuary status. Next, I would like to address executive limitation number four, relationships with staff and volunteers. Item number two highlights the organizational culture that I believe the superintendent strives for and pushes throughout, out through policy within this district. I also believe that this is the area that the organization has the greatest opportunities to make improvements. Some examples of decisions that have been made over the last couple of years in a way that could have been more open, honest, and respectful of staff opinion include middle school schedule and the change to the seven-period day, the proposal that would have made safety and risk management the resolution to become a law enforcement agency, elementary master schedules that have impacted student access to science, art, health, social studies instruction, as well as developmentally appropriate recess and lunchtime. There likely was some very important dialogue regarding these decisions prior to their implementation. However, without having the association teacher voice at the table, we cannot guarantee that our collective voice has been heard. The opportunity that was missed was having the dialogue in an open, honest way that included staff opinion before the decision was made. Having the individuals who are working with students directly and will feel the impacts of any decision most acutely take part in the dialogue prior to a decision is the only way to realize this organizational expectation for the culture within our district. Item number four highlights the process for addressing employee actions that do not meet expectations. This process is so important. We appreciate the negotiated language that is part of our contract within, with the district. One of the next steps towards realizing this as a successful mechanism within the district is to help administrators treat this process as a supportive gotcha, gotcha, and not a strictly punitive gotcha. And not, our members, our members are doing everything they can to support their students, and a little grace in a tough process like this does go a long way.
Thank you, Mindy. Zoe is next. Oh, okay.
Good evening. My name is Angela Lopez, and I'm a tenth grader in the Salem Kaiser School District. Measure 105 would directly impact my family. I would like my school district to keep me and my family safe. I'm a youth, a Latinos Unidos siempre, and we're all against the measures, measure. Show us you care on all, even if we're colored or not. Show us the respect that everyone shows you, each other. I would like the school board to endorse no on Measure 105. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Alex Sosa next, and following that will be Cindy Rico.
Good evening. My name is Alex. I am a youth member of Luce. I am also a student in Salem Kaiser District. I am here to urge you, my school board, to endure no on Measure 105. Show us that you care about all your students. Show us that no matter our skin color, our immigration status, or gender, or our, or our nationality, you will be here and ensure we get a quality education.
With the topic of safe schools, I urge the school board to support voting no on Measure 105. This measure is not only supported by flat-out white supremacists, but it also clearly supports the further criminalization and terrorizing of communities of color. It would only worsen and alter the racial profiling that already exists. As someone who knows what it's like to have someone they love be forcefully put into an inhumane detention center, I would like to voice the fact that we do not plan on growing dim when speaking about the amount of strategically caused trauma both ICE and law enforcement has already caused our community. Your support on voting no on Measure 105 is necessary. As board members of the Salem Kaiser School District, it is irresponsible to ignore this measure due to the negative effects it would cause to students of our district and their families. And may I remind you that those who fake their worry and remain neutral in situations of injustice are extremely harmful. Neutrality is violence. Thank you.
Let's move on to Cindy Rico. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll get it straight pretty soon.
Hi, y'all. My name is Toni, and I'm a sophomore at North Salem High School. I have attended Salem Kaiser School since kindergarten. By looking at the makeup of the school board, I know that none of y'all know what it's like to be a youth of color in the Salem Kaiser School District. Might, some might say you do, but you really don't. If Measure 105 passes, you can expect your students going to school with unhealthy amount of stress. We will not be able to do good in school because our worries will be that our parents will be profiled and deported. Take it from a, a youth of color with immigrant parents, Measure 105 is meant to hurt us. When fifty-two percent of youth in the district are of color, it is your duty, speak up for what is right.
Thank you, Toni. Next we have Zaya DeBaro.
So, hi, everybody. My name is Izel Ibarra, and I'm from Michoacan, Mexico. I am a former student of Maquis High School, just graduated on June eighth, and a member of Latinos Unidos siempre. I was born in Mexico, and I was brought at the age of two. I've been living in the United States for sixteen years now. You see, my life has not only been perfect, has not, has not always been perfect. My mom abandoned my younger, my two younger brothers and I when I was just ten. My autistic brother was nine, and my baby brother was just four. The only family we have is my dad. Unfortunately, my brother, who has autism, and my dad and I don't have papers, so we're Lately, I've been having nightmares where my parent, where my dad is deported, and so am I. And I don't think that's healthy, and I don't think that's what you want your students to feel like, knowing that their parents are immigrants and they don't have papers. It's scary not having your parents with you. I don't have my mom, and it's scary enough. And to have my dad deported, that's even worse. Maybe some of you guys understand, and maybe some don't. But trust me, I don't want my brothers to feel like they're not going to have anyone back at home. I just want our school district to understand that there are students out there who are undocumented, who have DACA, or who don't even have DACA at all. You guys have to understand that. You guys have to protect us. You guys have to protect your students. I believe that that's why you guys are school board members. Am I correct? Another thing is that we obviously can't talk about politics in school. And I believe that it stops being politics when it starts affecting our lives. It's not something humane that no one speaks out about it, and it's scary not having your parents around, and it's scary to think that, you know what, maybe today I have class, and then maybe later on, I'm not going to have my dad or mom at home. So I'm here to say, to tell you guys to vote no on Measure 105. And I would like everyone to stand up that is against Measure 105. Thank you.
Thank you. Adriana, are you here? And following in, Adriana would be Claire Barnes.
Good evening Chairperson Goss, Vice Chair Blasi, Superintendent Perry, and members of the Salem Kaiser School Board. My name is Adriana Miranda. I come here today as a parent and as a mother to my kids. I want to ensure that the safety of my children and community in which I live in isn't constituted in fear and harassment based solely upon if someone is perceived to be an undocumented immigrant. No family and no community should live, should have to live in fear of losing a loved one solely on their immigration status in this country. solely on their immigration status in this country. I thank the Salem Kaiser School Board for reaffirming and recognizing that our students' emotional well-being and ability to achieve is negatively impacted by the arrests, detention, and removal of our family members. I urge the school board to take commitment and give priority to the safety and overall well-being and success to every student in our Salem Kaiser Schools. I hereby pledge to vote no this November on Measure 105, and I hope you all take parallel action as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Claire Barnes. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. I'm speaking as a community member. So I'm a speech pathologist at Salem Hospital. I got my master's degree in speech and hearing science at Portland State University, and a big part of my professional education was the study of child language development and literacy. Among the most basic principles of teaching is that you must create an environment that's conducive to learning, and children cannot learn in a place where they don't feel safe. Many people in our community, as you've heard tonight, are fearful of what could happen if Measure 105 passes, and for good reason. Because if that measure passes, it basically says that racial profiling is okay in the state of Oregon. It has the potential for our teachers, administrators, and other school employees to be asked to add federal immigration law enforcement to their list of duties. What a waste of our resources. Worse, it would create an atmosphere of fear and suspicion in our schools. And it doesn't have to be that way if we all stand together, if we stay united as a community. And so I want to thank you for renewing the Safe and Welcoming Schools Resolution, and I want to urge you to go the further step and show that you really mean it by coming out publicly and clearly against Measure 105. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire, and I thank all the people that have turned out this evening to express your opinion in an effort to make it a good school district. As we move down, the next item is action items. The first one is adoption of resolution N-01819-2, and we've asked Director Blasi to read that this evening.
So this is our Safe and Welcoming Schools Resolution. Whereas, the Salem Kaiser School Board is committed to providing all students with an educational experience that provides an inclusive, barrier-free environment where all students have access, opportunity, to high-quality education. And whereas, this commitment means that student success will not be predicated nor predetermined by race, national origin, disability, economic circumstance, mobility, native language, sexual orientation, immigration status, gender identity, or level of proficiency upon entering school. And whereas, the physical safety and emotional well-being of students and the assurance that our schools are safe and welcoming for all students and their families is paramount to students being able to achieve. And whereas, the school board does not tolerate any form of discrimination, hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, cyberbullying, or menacing of students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the school board expects the following. All Salem Kaiser School District staff are diligent in recognizing and addressing discrimination, hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, cyberbullying, or menacing as per administrative policy stated here. Staff are informed of and follow the administrative policy related to dealing with non-local law enforcement, including immigration officials who enter any district property and the administrative policy and procedures related to the handling of complaints. And all Salem Kaiser staff maintain an organizational culture that treats students and their families with respect, dignity, and courtesy. And the superintendent maintains, develops, communicates, and implements administrative policies and procedures that foster a culture that is safe, inclusive, welcoming, and celebrates the diversity found within our community. And the superintendent takes appropriate action to prevent and/or correct conditions, procedures, actions, or decisions that are unlawful, unethical, unsafe, disrespectful, disruptive, undignified, or in violation of board or administrative policy. Be it further resolved, that the Board of Directors will review, revise if appropriate, and reaffirms this resolution annually.
Thank you, Director Blasi.
Would you like a motion? So I would move that the Salem Kaiser School Board adopts, reaffirms, actually reaffirms, Resolution Number 201819-2, which again is our Safe and Welcoming Schools Resolution.
Second? I have a motion to reaffirm. I have a second.
Where you taking the second from? Jessie?
I think Jessie did.
Okay, we'll vote at this point, all those. Any discussion? The motion has been made and seconded.
Sure, I'll discuss. I just wanted to thank everybody who came out here today, especially because, especially when we look at our world, especially as students, we see, especially, students don't feel, you can't control it, you know? You can't go, you can't vote, but you can do things, like you can speak to us, and you can go out and you can advocate. So for everybody who, especially those who are underage who came out to advocate for what you believe in, I just want to say that I'm very proud of you for doing that. I think that's really awesome, that you're advocating for your community, especially at such a young age. I think that's cool. You're going to blow all of us out of the water, so I think that's fantastic. And then secondly, to our, to our community, I, I just want to say that I know throughout our country, it really seems as if people feel divided. And I mean, I guess the media doesn't help us, and neither do all those Facebook comments that we throw at each other. But I would just like to say, at the end of the day, we're focused on education. We're focused on making sure that we can grow and become stronger and united, and that's what we're focused on. And so I just want to let you guys know that every day, I know that everyone else here feels, feels the same way, is when, when we're working on things, it's the passion and the, that drives us to help everybody. And so I think that, that can unite us all.
Thank you, Jessie. Any other discussion?
So first, thank you to the community for being here and for expressing your concern and for, but also for complimenting the board and the school district for having implemented this resolution last year and for our continued commitment to that. And I know that, you know, on the board, although we may have differing opinions about, you know, the ballot measure that was discussed this evening, I know wholeheartedly that this board, this school board supports and endorses and believes in and stands by this resolution. We are elected leaders in this community, and we have made a commitment to ensuring that all of our students feel safe and welcome and are in an environment where they have the ability to, to learn. I personally, and this is just me personally, it's, it's, we know what happened a year ago. We know what happened a year and a half ago, and that's why we are committed to ensuring that, that our students feel welcome to come to school. As a district, we have also made a commitment to improving not just our graduation rate, but our absenteeism rate. And a lot of these, these things, you know, that we, we discuss in our welcoming schools policy, not just immigration status, but sexual orientation, economic circumstances, disability, all of these have the potential, you know, to impact students' ability to attend school. And, you know, a year ago, it was, you know, a, a lot of bullying that we were seeing. We even heard a couple of students mention that. So I, I think this, this resolution is very well-written. It covers a lot, but we were asked to, to take a position on a ballot measure, and collectively, you know, we decided as a, as a board not to do that, but we are committed to this, to this resolution. And I had hoped personally that we would be willing to make that stand against that ballot measure, but I do believe that we are committed to ensuring safe and welcoming schools.
Thank you, Chair Blasi. All those in favor of reaffirming the resolution? Aye.
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 Opposed? None seen? We'll move on. The ref, the resolution is reaffirmed. Consent calendar, consent calendar. We have two items this evening. I lost it now. Acceptance of grants, which are in your packet, as well as personnel law action in your packet, is there discussion? Any items to be pulled?
I was going to move that we accept the consent calendar.
Second.
The consent calendar, the, has been, been moved to accept, and it's been seconded. All those in favor, respond by voting yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
All vote aye.
Shouldn't put them together?
Well, does anybody want to pull it, or is there any discussion on any of them?
Anyone want to pull a item from the consent calendar? Seeing none?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is the BG-10 included in that, or no?
No.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote. I apologize, we skipped a thing the first time around, so if you'll bear with me, please vote. Aye, if you approve. Nay, if not.
Aye.
Aye.
We've approved the consent calendar. We have some readings this evening. We have a first reading on the agenda. This is in regards to BG-10, which is board governance, and then language in Section So the first reading. Comments, discussion? All right, we'll move on from that to reports. Director Hyun?
So some of you know that this September is National Preparedness Month. If you own a home, you probably have insurance. You don't have it because you want something bad to happen, but you have it because bad things do happen, and you don't know when, but regardless, you prepare, so that if your home burns down or something else happens, that you can financially recover. But I wonder how many of you are prepared for what may be the biggest natural disaster of your life that could come today, tonight, before you go home, or in the next 50 years? The Cascadia event, as it's known, is a 9.0 or a higher earthquake that could happen anytime. So I would like you to think about, how would you get home if you're away? If you were here right now, how would you get home if this earthquake struck right now? With most, if not all, bridges unpassable, power will be turned off, there'll be no cell service. How will you survive once your home with no water, power, and empty store shelves? The government and first responders will be overwhelmed, many will not even be able to get to work themselves. It isn't if, it's when. This earthquake will happen. Will you be ready? FEMA recommends you store two weeks of food and water and necessary medications. Two weeks may not even be enough. It might actually be two months before things are, are running again. And of course, don't forget about your animals. Also, you should check your homeowner's policy, because many of them don't cover earthquakes. So you might want to make sure that yours does. So again, September is National Preparedness Month. You can go to www.cofsalem.net/ emergencies to learn how you can get prepared. And also, this Saturday is the 7th Annual Get Ready Event hosted by Northwest Natural Gas. It is from 10:30 to 1:00 at, in the front of the state Capitol, and they have lots of good information there. So don't be a victim, be prepared.
Thank you, Director Hyun. The other report is executive limitations number four, relations with staff and volunteers.
All right, this is executive limitation number four, relationship with staff and volunteers, and is the fourth of 12 monitoring reports scheduled for 2018-19. And I'm just going to kind of go through things that have, are kind of a highlight. So under number two, failed to establish expectations to ensure an organizational culture that conforms with the following values. Just one highlight, that last year, we did, held some district listening sessions with early career educators that yielded information about their onboarding experience, not their mentoring experience, and so we did some changes to that. We also found out some information regarding our special education teachers and supervision of paraprofessionals, and so we're working on both of those this year for our onboarding. We're in the process of collecting some feedback on that. Number four, failed to implement a reasonable process to address employee actions. We have a number of employee actions that happen throughout the course of the year, and I do want you to know I pay personal attention to many of those, and also to the reporting requirements to teacher standards and practices, because that is my obligation as a superintendent to ensure those reports happen. Next, under number six, a well-defined system to recruit and select the most highly qualified and best-suited candidates. We've expanded our interactions with our new employees between the time we hire them and the time they come to work for us, because many we hire in the spring. So we've expanded our social media presence, greater partnerships with local and regional universities. We've also started 24J meet and greets, and we've really worked to share the importance of equity in our daily work. And recently, the NAACP and the Coalition of Churches have recognized the district for improving our recruitment strategies that promote our diverse candidates, not just so-in classified employees, teachers, and administrators, not meeting the need, but beginning to see our recruitment strategies work. Next, under number seven, around failed to operate within written personnel policies. Next page over, when we get to the legends piece of this, our teacher evaluation program for our licensed educators. I do want to remind you, we are working hard in the revision of this. We were a leader in the state in the original evaluation process development, in part because we had a federal TIF grant, and so we spent quite a few dollars and months and months and months of revision of that work. It's time to update that and revise it, but it's slow-going, and our goal is that the district and the licensed association will continue to work, and that we'll have some portions that are piloted later this year. We're in the middle of mandatory training season, so after October 1, I will step down into HR to ask, have we all met our mandatory retraining requirements, including me? I have not done mine yet, but I will by October 1. And then, as a reminder, when we go to number nine, failed to honor the terms of negotiated agreements. We are currently in bargaining with Ask ESP, going very well and close to a resolution, so I want to thank Rita and her association team just for continuing their diligence around that. And then, under pending, clear at the bar. And then, under pending, clear at the bottom, and update executive limitations, we're in the process of revising, reviewing the duties of employees and employee criminal history check and fingerprinting, and mainly, we would like to have the requirement that employees notify us of criminal investigations or abuse allegations. But those are in process, not finalized yet, but I wanted to alert you, because there are a couple fairly big ones. With that, I'll entertain comments, questions, or concerns.
Director Green?
So I have a, I have a question on that last one, Superintendent Perry. Where you're talking about having an employee notify us of a new crime, I mean, are you looking at the different levels of crimes, the different orders of crimes? Because I could think of an instance where an employee may be a director on a corporate board, who may have a charge against, I, I'm just trying to think, you know, what is the most wild thing? Obviously, if they are abusing kids, we want to know about it, we'll know that, but, you know, misdemeanor versus felony, are you looking at levels of crime? Are you looking at the preclusionary crimes that are in the TSBC statute? Or, because I also want to make sure, you know, looking at the contract we're looking at for our classified, we have the part in there about
Personal.
Personal rights, so we don't violate that. I, I mean, I know you don't have it fully fleshed out, but I just want you to be thinking along those lines of, what's the nexus
Yep.
To the job that the person is doing for our school district.
Correct, and we'll be sure that we run it by legal counsel as we finish in our associations. Any comments on that, John, or, and we'll bring it forward, at least so you have information about it through our communication.
Thanks.
Other comments?
Just a question. Can you remind us of the TIF grant that we got? Is that done? That was a one-time?
Yeah, it was a teacher effectiveness grant from the federal government, and there were several rounds of TIF dollars, but we, I think we're funded once, if, I don't remember if we were funded twice.
Okay, thank you. You have a board meeting schedule in your packet, and then I'll turn it over to Superintendent Perry. No, it's first reading. What are you talking?
Executive Limitation.
On the executive limitation report, you still have a thumbs up, because you haven't changed the policy.
Okay.
You haven't changed it yet.
I thought it scratched out.
But you haven't, but you have not voted to change the policy yet.
That was just the first reading.
That was the first reading of the policy.
Got it.
Okay, shall we proceed as is? Thumbs up? No? Okay.
Yep, yep.
Okay, Director, or Superintendent Perry?
So the board meeting schedule is on, in your information item, our next board meeting, which we likely will have as a, some action on, will be on September 25th. And then, the second report, I will turn it over to Chief Operations Officer Michael Wolf about the Boundary Review Task Force meeting schedule and the Community Bond Oversight Committee.
Good evening, Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. So I'll give you a quick update on where we are with the two very important public service volunteer opportunities. We're currently accepting applications for the Community Bond Oversight Committee and also the Boundary Review Task Force. And we'll start with the Community Bond Oversight Committee. It will be formed to monitor the progress of the, of the bond program and provide regular reports to the board. The Equity Lens will apply to the work and structure of both of these opportunities. The CBOC, or the Community Bond Oversight Committee, will consist of between nine to 12 volunteers, who will each serve two to three years. The meetings will be held quarterly. The board will appoint four to six members. We're currently accepting applications, as I had mentioned, and the remainder of that committee will be appointed through those applications, through Board of Leadership. There will be up to two board members that will serve as liaisons on the, on the CBOC, and that will begin in October. We're looking to start that committee in October, typically with quarterly meetings, but could be more often if either the board or the superintendent would like that. In our application process, which is on our website, you can see the desired qualifications of the participants there. The second opportunity is the Boundary Review Task Force, and that will consist up to 50 volunteers. And while the CBOC is appointed by the board, the Boundary Review Task Force is appointed by the superintendent, and we're going through that process as we speak. We've got a list of invitees, and also, the application process is underway with applications due for both opportunities this Friday, so we'll have much more to, to look through. The Boundary Review Task Force meetings will begin Thursday, the 27th, and you can, of this month, and you can see the schedule on the last page of your packet. You can see that there'll basically be a task force meeting every Tuesday night for the following two months leading to the December board meeting with a final recommendation for boundary changes to the superintendent and the school board at that time. So like I said, quick flyover on the two opportunities, and if you have any questions about that, I can certainly try to answer them.
Director Green?
Just a suggestion, Mike, I'm looking at our webpage right now, and on the downloadable attachments for the bound and boundary, bond and boundary commissions, while we've got some in Spanish, you might want to, where the actual application is, put that in Spanish.
Okay.
We've got both of them there. One says for English, one says for Spanish, but it's written in English. While we have instructions, I believe, above in Spanish, you want to make sure that PDF form we have for the Spanish one is instructions and labeling it is in Spanish as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Let's move on then to testimony non, on a non-agenda item. Nick, I believe you're on that list. You introduce yourself, and then the city of residence.
My name is Nick Bondogwin. I live here in Salem, and during the summertime, I took my kids to the free lunch programs that are offered. It was at Highland over on Broadway, and through that process, it was quite educational for me how much food waste happens. And I didn't know if there's a committee that I can be directed to. I, I served with Kathy in another committee, and she said that this would be an opportunity to come and talk to you, but I don't know, seems more one-way, and I just, I don't know if there's a committee that she could form to look into how to reduce food waste, or something in that nature, if there's some direction you could take me to, like, go this route, and you could see what you can do to reduce food waste. But it was an open package of food, had to be thrown away right after it was touched, which doesn't make any sense in my mind, how this all works out, and it seems to be a big, huge waste of time, money, and resources, so I didn't, that's, I guess it's more of a question and answer, but I don't know if this is the format to do that.
How about, we'll get your contact information, and one of us will reach out to you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. There are no other people. Does anyone that's present wish to speak? Okay. Board activity report, and this will tell you what your board members have been doing since the last board meeting. Jim, you want to start on that end?
No, go ahead.
You don't want to start?
No. I'm good.
I attended the CTEC ribbon cutting event for the new programs that were starting there, and it was really good to see the big turnout that we had, and of course, all the support we have from the community is really awesome.
Just real quick, I went out and met with each of, almost all principals in my zone before school started, because I didn't want to bother them after school started, but it was so cool, because they're, they're so excited, and I have a lot of new principals, new administrators, vice principals, and they're, they're just incredibly excited. A lot of great experience that they're bringing to their, their new school, and I've been able to touch base just briefly with a few of them since school started, and, you know, there's still that excitement, a little bit of, you know, deer-in-the-headlight look, but just really, really exciting for the new school year, and just to see their enthusiasm and that of their teachers, and so.
Thank you. On this side?
I too. Attended the CTEC ribbon cutting, very well-done, great turnout, as was mentioned earlier, so we were very pleased with that. Also, on the 30th of August, the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce has established a tradition of treating all of the principals, teachers, and staffs of all of the Kaiser schools, elementary, middle, and high school, to lunch, and again, it's a good bonding thing for that community, and I just want to applaud Danielle Bethel and the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce for continuing that, that tradition, and also, I believe it was, the meal was donated by somebody, I want to say it was Natural Gas. I'll give them credit, I hope it's well-deserved.
I love you're done.
I'm done.
I went to the two everyday 24J events at Auburn, the one in the evening and the one in the morning, the press conference, and they were both very well-done, and I did go to the SCUF luncheon today, and it was very nice.
All right, I, I also went to several, but the one that stuck in my mind was the Auburn event. It was, I thought, a spectacular event for those kids. They were offered free backpacks, they were offered hot dogs, and, gosh, snack packs, and all kinds of things, and every child was given the opportunity to choose a backpack, and they had wonderful cupcakes, I might add, that I tried, but it was just a really nice event. Kids were so excited to start their first day. Any other comments?
The only thing bad about those cupcakes is you could only have one. And it was really good. And the kids also, I don't know if all of them, but some of them got some winter rubber boots for those kids that walk to school, so their feet will be dry
Right.
In the rain.
So thank you to all those companies that participated in that and gave of their products and others. Costco was a big one, and so was the cupcake. It was sweetcakes from State Street downtown, and anyone else aware of people that contributed? Okay. Superintendent's report?
All right, so a couple of things, since you've mentioned a lot of these on my list, but Crystal Apple Award nominations are due October 11th. In response to our Everyday 24J campaign, I just want to add that the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality is helping to provide additional resources for schools in the North Hider, High Feeder area, so all those schools that feed into North High School, where we have the highest chronic absenteeism rate. September 15th through October 15th is Hispanic Heritage Month, and as a reminder, we have more than 40% of our students are Latino, and we celebrate the rich culture and tradition they bring to our school district. And then, on August 22nd, the NAACP and the Salem Kaiser Coalition of Churches did a forum, and it was well-attended, full house at CTEC, and really thanks to Rhonda and Jim, because they took them on a tour, and I really don't know how long it was till everyone left, because they were having such a fun night at touring CTEC. So it was a really nice event, and I really appreciate their support of my leadership.
Any other comments? I think we've gotten to the end. Unless there's anything else anyone wants to comment on, we're adjourned.